This meeting, the Clay County Commission to Order, we will begin this afternoon with our invocation. Administrator, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Yes, please join us in an attitude of prayer. God in heaven, help us come up with effective strategies that can enable us to move Clay County forward in a meaningful way. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us toward the best way to take action to accomplish our goals. Help us to tackle all the topics we need to discuss, come up with excellent solution, and leave this meeting inspired. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of this afternoon's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion's been made for the approval of the agenda as printed. Discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I'll close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here. Oh, yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Thought you were going to abstain from the agenda.
It's my allergies, I'm telling you. That's why we can't go outside today.
Meeting schedule, Administrator?
Yes, the next meeting of the commission will be a business session next Wednesday, April 13th, at six o'clock here in the commission chambers.
There are no honorary resolutions this afternoon, no discussion items. Likewise, no public hearings, nor are there any consent agenda items. That brings us to our regular agenda. The first item on this afternoon's regular agenda is 2022-116. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-116 is a consideration of a request to waive penalties and interest by James and Kayla Phillips. Information was provided to the commissioners in your packet. Unfortunately, I do not believe the applicant is available to speak with the commissioners, but Assessor Baldwin will be happy to present information and answer any questions that you have.
Very well. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. I'm really here just to answer any questions you may have. We never did receive an address change for the, from this taxpayer. And as far as I know from talking with Barbara O'Reilly, the collector, the taxes have not been paid. Is that correct?
Is there any, is there any history as far as the, this sort of thing happening before with this taxpayer?
With this tax, what this was, was they had moved out of state or out of the county, and there was never an address change notified to us or the collector's office. I believe the collector didn't even notice an address change until 3/13 of 2022. So, in regards, there's no error on the county's part on this.
And the other thing is, they are not available today. They moved out of state, I think, is what we said.
Yeah, I believe so.
So, that would probably account for the difficulty in them being able to appear before us today. Are there any questions?
No questions, thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, this seems as though it should go on the regular agenda for next week. I don't know that we need to indicate a box. So, this will be 2022-116 to appear on next week's regular agenda, unless there's any objection.
I agree with that. Thanks.
Brings us to 2022-123. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-123 is consideration of a sole source contract with Sunbelt Computer Software. This is for services for the prosecutor's office and the public administrator's office. And Brian Swing is here to answer any questions and present information.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, I'm Brian Swing, IT Director with the JIS Department, requesting that the commission approve sole source for the Sunbelt Computer Software.
Okay. And the reason this is sole source is because of the uniqueness of the product or?
Yeah, Sunbelt is the sole owner and producer of the programming language, and the JIS Department has been using the product for over 25 years.
Okay. Are there any questions?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Do we, I really could, I think, what, regular agenda, does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, we are talking about an expenditure here.
Yep. Very good. That brings us to a number of companion issues that are grouped together. These are some expenditures related to ARPA funding, it looks like. So, that is 2022-122, 125, 126, 127, 128, and 129. Administrator?
Yes, thank you. As Commissioner Nolte mentioned, these are several resolutions that are companion resolutions together. The first Resolution 2022-123 is consideration of reallocating funds within a fund, and this is with our ARPA money from one category into another. That was discussed with the commissioners several meetings ago. And Victor Herbert is here, is our county auditor, to present information about this and also the agreements that follow with about four or five different entities.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Herbert, Clay County Auditor. So, before you, Resolution 2022-122 is a transfer within a fund, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund 224. We're essentially moving two accounts from the COVID response line, $2.3 million, into the utilities infrastructure line for that eligible purpose, and then $2.95 million from the economic recovery line into the likewise utilities infrastructure account. The reason for this is from our discussion that we had that the Administrator led on March 23rd. It's essentially to implement that plan of dealing with the remainder of our first tranche, to essentially accommodate those requests we have of a medical-related nature with the COVID response account, and then remove, and then the existing balance, unencumbered balance, would be shifted to accommodate the requests we have from our municipal partners, mostly of the infrastructure nature. There might be one we have to move back for COVID response, just depending on the nature of the request. But that's essentially it. Again, it's just looking at the unencumbered balance in the account and accounting for that based on everything that's been approved, and then setting us up to deal with the remainder of the first tranche. So, happy to take any questions.
Any questions of the auditor?
No questions, thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Very good. So, do you want, are you going to want to address each one of these as we go through them as a group, or are you, as far as the additional ones, 25, 26, 27, and that bunch?
So, yeah, I can, I can just go through them if you'd like.
I think what I'd like to is go through, just go through them individually, and then once you're kind of done with your presentation, I think what I'd like to do is if there's anybody who has an item on this, go through those one at a time and see if they would like to further comment, rather than interrupt you each time as we go through. Let you go ahead and make the presentation for the group, and then I'll ask for comments for each one individually, if there's anything that needs to be added or said.
Certainly. And one thing I'll note, like, that, that transfer is really going to be necessary for when we deal with municipalities. So, it's, these next sections will deal with all COVID response. So, just to, you know, clarify that. But, but yeah, we'll step through. The first resolution is 2022-125, and this one's from North Kansas City Hospital. It's an American Rescue Plan Act request. The, the request is being recommended by staff to accommodate up to $2.5 million. As, as we noted in the, in the request for commission action support, was, you know, a bit higher, $5.4 million. This was after a lot of discussion with staff about how to make a request, what the commission is looking for as far as criteria and things they want to fund. And we landed on 2.5 just based on the available resources we have. Administrator put together, working with my office as well as scoring system. We looked at inputs like number of beds, licensed beds for inpatients, number of COVID discharges for, for inpatients, and, and other data. And, you know, based on that, recommended 2.5 million with what we have left in the first tranche. Essentially, this is eligible under the final rule, as with hospitals dealing with COVID. There isn't going to be much question there, but the particular categories are prevention and mitigation practices, as well as medical expenses. And you'll note on the last page, second to last page of this particular request, you have the itemization of their, their requests, mostly doing with a lot of medical equipment for testing and for actually treating COVID with the pharmaceuticals. So, upon approval, this would be a reimbursement, again, for this, these are expenditures that have already occurred for North Kansas City Hospital within, within the eligible timeframe. And so, we'll work with their staff to get at least $2.5 million of proof that's been unduplicated, as we confirmed with all hospitals that they haven't already received assistance for what they're requesting. And then, and then issue that payment once we have that confirmation. That's all I really have on North Kansas City Hospital. You know, we do have, like, like you said, we can, we can bring them up here for any comments. We have Austin Jones, their CFOs, with us today.
Is the commission okay, which is, we'll ask the auditor questions as we go along, and then we'll come back and bring the others up individually. Is that format okay?
Thanks for me. Thanks.
That's fine.
Very good. So, are there any questions of the auditor on the North Kansas City portion?
No questions.
No questions, thank you.
You may proceed to the Liberty Hospital Park.
Okay, so the next resolution is going to be 2022-126, and this is for Liberty Hospital. Staff is recommending for this American Rescue Plan Act application funding obligation up to $2.25 million. Again, we had numerous discussions with the hospital and meetings about their requests and what, what the commission would be looking for. And it was revised from the, the original request in January, where we, we followed up with them wanting a little more, just kind of fine tuning and consolidating and detailing out the requests. And so, what Liberty Hospital ultimately landed on was a request of $4.3 million, and it does look forward. It's forward capital to deal with, you know, handling COVID in the future, to be, to be set up to do so. Again, it is eligible under the final rule of, you know, those, those practices, same reasons as the last hospital. And you'll note in your, in the, in the support, you have the original applications, and then the last two pages highlight the revised one, where you have the forward-looking capital itemized, all dealing with COVID of $4.1 million, and then, you know, some personnel labor responsive to COVID that you have there as well, $248,000. So, what my staff would do again in this process is we work with the hospital, we would get support up to $2.25 million. This would be reimbursed for their future expenditures, get proof of that back, and then submit payment once we have it. So, that's really all I think I have. We have, again, we have Michael Leone, CFO, Liberty Hospital, is, is here for comment, but you want to do that after I get through all this?
I think so. That might be a little bit more orderly. I did have one, maybe more observation. I noticed that one of the items was to deal with the issue of short-term, or the shortfall in nursing staff. And that was something that I, at least I'd expressed some concerns with as far as permanent F, full-time employees. These seem to be contract workers, which I feel a little, I feel better about than, than in generating an ongoing expenses, since this is one-time money. So, I just wanted to, to point out that I, I think that, you know, I make a distinction between ongoing employees and those who are brought in just for the emergency of the, of the nature of the emergency that it's kind of created there. Any questions of the auditor?
No questions, thanks.
No questions.
Please proceed to the next item.
Okay, so continuing right along, Resolution 2022-127 is rescue plan recommendation for Excelsior Springs Hospital in the amount of $1.5 million. This one differs from the request of $4.5 million, and it's really a, a single purpose. It's reimbursement of an air handling unit that the hospital already installed to better deal with COVID with, within their hospital. So, that's specifically mentioned of improving that ventilation system within a public hospital in, in the guidance. So, it is eligible. We have the detailed requests in the, in the support submission already as far as invoices. So, this one should be, you know, pretty straightforward to gather the, the documentation and, and submit payment. So, which we, which we really appreciate. And again, you have the CEO and you have the CFO here today of, for, for any additional comment, Kristin DeHart and Cameron Meyer, so.
Okay, questions, comments? Please proceed.
Okay, and then we have Resolution 2022-128. This is for the Public Health Center, and this is specifically for their 2022 budget request. As you recall, we've done previous assessments with 2021 reimbursement and, and Operation Safe Support. So, this is for 2022, and staff is recommending, again, after scoring and taking into consideration all factors of $1 million. The request began at $2.2 million. After, you know, some changes since, since January and the status of COVID, we, we reached back out, just given our, you know, limited resources with this, this first tranche, and we, the revised request is $1.4 million, and we still recommended $1 million of that request. Now, this one does deal with a number of categories, and you can find that on their last page, revised submission of $1.4 million, dealing with payroll responsive to the pandemic, as well as, you know, contractual items, and, and then some, some capital and, and equipment, all of which is eligible. And then, so I noted there, there are some differences in different areas of the final rule here, of not just mitigation practices and medical expenses, but also that payroll and then improving design and programs to respond to, to the, to the pandemic. So, that's a little, little difference from the others here with that one. So, essentially, again, we would work with health center like we have before on CARES Act, Operation Safe, and they've been great to work with of getting us those, you know, that documentation we need before we submit payment, and making sure it doesn't duplicate anything that, that we've already done. So, that's it. And I, I think I saw our, our health director is here today for incoming, and, and their, their CFO as well, Daryl, might be in Gary Zabreck. So, that's all I have with the health center.
Questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions.
Please proceed to number 128, 29, excuse me.
No, that's fine. Yeah, 129. So, the last one on this list is Resolution 2022-129, and this is a rescue plan, again, in the public health response category. This one is for a nonprofit, not the hospitals or health center. It's an entity called Life Unlimited throughout the county. I think locations in North Kansas City and, and Liberty here, here are close. And it's in the amount of $210,000. This, this is, the request was $518,000, $518,880. But after discussions and scoring, we arrived on $210,000. The eligible, part of the final rule for this request is we're looking at remote technology they want to implement in serving their, their clients who are individuals with disabilities. And so, this enables Life Unlimited to be able to use less personnel to be able to provide these services, do it in a way that, you know, has that remote social distancing component. So, that's what we saw as the, as a eligible reason, and, and then, you know, allows them to lower their staffing costs and then, and provide more services, and make it explain better. It's, it's also a pilot project, something that's unique in the state of Missouri, is, is my understanding. The, you can see the breakdown on, on the back gives the, the cost breakdown. And really, the reason the county landed on $210,000 is that's the hard fixed costs for the first year. It's the, you know, the software implementation and then all the equipment setup in that first year. Now, we did, we did ask the nonprofit, could you support the ongoing labor costs, and they did not have a concern with that. So, so just so you are aware of that, but that's how we arrived at that number for, for this setup. Essentially, I, I think that's all I have on that one. We do have Mark Battran, and sorry, I think I forgot. Paul is here as well with, with Life Unlimited, and they can make more comments now that I am through that list. So, that's really all I have for those resolutions today.
Very well. Any questions on the last item?
No questions, thanks.
No questions, thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and just give an opportunity for comments and any questions from the commission, and we'll start with 2022-125. That is the request from North Kansas City Hospital.
Good afternoon. My name's Austin Jones. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for North Kansas City Hospital, Ameritas Health. So, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the partnership and, and just the support that we've received from the county. The pandemic alone, we've discharged over 3,500 patients with COVID. We've seen over 500 deaths in that time, and the, the financial losses have been significant. They average around 10,000 per discharge. So, this is tremendously helpful. And, and not only the financial support, but just the cooperation between the county and also the other healthcare authorities and hospitals that are here today. So, wanted to thank you all for that and open up for any questions.
Questions or comments?
Just a comment, which is that, you know, proud to partner with you all, and obviously, it's been a challenging time these last couple of years for everybody in the healthcare sector. And I know our hospitals have done amazing work to, to serve our community. I'm grateful for that and glad that we can chip in to help with the ongoing challenge. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. No questions today, but I will second what Commissioner Carpenter said as well. We appreciate all of your guys' support and communication and partnerships without all this. And the pandemic has been a rough, rough go for everybody, especially here in Clay County. So, whatever we can do to help make everything a little easier, we're here to do that. So, thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you very much for what you're doing for our county.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That brings us to 2022-126, and that would be the request by Liberty Hospital.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mike Leoni with Liberty Hospital, the Chief Financial Officer. I just want to say thank you as well for the opportunity to, to receive this funding and the, the working with staff. It's been a good exchange and really appreciate that, and gave us some good guidance on how to revise our application. Also pleased to report that COVID census in the hospital is down. So, we are in a much better place as a community today than we were a couple of months ago. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments?
No questions, but once again, thanks for coming in, and anything we can do to help, we, we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Yeah, just the same remarks, which is that I'm very grateful for all that y'all did. And I should have mentioned Operation Safe, too. I, I know that couldn't have happened without the partnership with, with North Kansas City Hospital and Liberty Hospital. And just, you know, was grateful to, to meet with you and, and discuss this, and again, just hope, hope it can help put us and healthcare in a sustainable trajectory going forward. I know the pandemic is at a lull right now, and, and God willing, it will stay that way. But I think it's not unreasonable to assume at least the possibility of a, of a resurgence at some point here. And so, I know you all will continue to serve the community well, and hopefully this can help.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
That brings us to 2022-127. That's the request submitted by Excelsior Springs.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and for your support today. I am Kristin DeHart. I'm honored to be the CEO for Excelsior Springs Hospital. Have been there about five years, and we learned a term in Excelsior Springs that is, was a little new to me, but called deferred maintenance. And as we found our air handlers in our hospital, our main hospital system was over 40 years old with some challenges. So, your consideration for our project and the help along the way has greatly supported not only the growth of our hospital, but the health of our community by having folks in. As we found in January, we found at many times our hospitals in Clay County were unable to accept our patients, and we started to see them retire acuity. And we know that that air handler project that was installed last summer certainly did save not only the lives of our staff, of our physicians, our patients, but also our community members. So, again, I thank you for that, and thank you for your support over the time, especially Gary Zabreck for his support from Clay County Public Health as well. And I'm happy to address any questions.
Commissioner Thompson, question or comment?
I have no questions, but thank you for coming in, and we are so glad we were able to do something for you guys. And I love seeing the growth and development up there at Excelsior. And I, I just think it's wonderful that you guys were able to get some of this off the ground and get all these new projects going. So, but thanks for coming in today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Just, again, thanks to you and all of your healthcare professionals who have served so many people. Thanks.
Thank you. And something that strikes me about, as we hear these requests, is the, the variety of needs that are presenting themselves. This is not a one-size-fits-all kind of a solution. So, we're happy to be able to have those discussions with each of the entities and be able to tailor the, the response that we have to the, to the needs and the requests of the, of the applicants. So, thank you very much.
And thank you. We appreciate that flexibility.
That brings us to 2022-120. That would be the public health centers.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Gary Zabreck, Director of Public Health, Clay County Public Health Center. And I do want to start off by thanking the commission for not only their past support in ARPA funds, but also in the CARES Act. And we greatly appreciate that. That support has really enabled us to stand up a very robust response to this pandemic at the health center. So, and I personally believe that saved a lot of hospitalizations, a lot of deaths, and a lot of illness in our county. And I was just giving a report to the Carney Chamber of Commerce today. Commissioner Nolte was there. The numbers for us right now, we're approaching, we're fast approaching one out of every four Clay County residents that have had COVID. We're not quite at that number yet, but we're getting close. So, again, thank you for, for your past support, and we appreciate any consideration you'll give us on this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for being here. In, in terms, obviously, we're not, in terms of the dollar amount, not meeting the full request. And so, I am curious in terms of the initial request and the monetary breakdown on the different items, how that breakdown will be affected by this initial amount of money coming to. For example, you know, one of the things you and I have talked a lot about is, is our vaccination rate, and now, what I would consider fully vaccinated being, being boosted as well. As you know, we continue to lag behind the, the nation in, in those percentages here in Clay County. So, for example, one of the things you have listed on here was 115,000 for vaccination promotion and education, and then went into some detail, and this, and this was really great to read, by the way, you know, a couple paragraphs about working on vaccine promotion and education and contracting with a marketing firm to do, you know, a whole variety of things, including Google Ads and social media and radio and TV and mailers, and targeting populations that are perhaps under vaccinated currently, which I think is all fantastic. So, I'm just wondering, is, is that still, is that 115,000 still the plan with, with these funds coming in?
Yes, as a matter of fact, depends on what the results are of that work with that group that we hope to contract to help us with. That may, in fact, result in an increase for what we would need to do going forward to get into, whether it's specifically marketing, target marketing, getting into neighborhoods, reaching those folks that are either vaccine hesitant or, or just haven't, have chosen not to get vaccinated so far. So, yeah, that's still going to be a big part of it. Yes, sir.
Okay, and you would expect that at that same investment range in that, in the $115,000 range?
That's, that would be the plan if this is funded.
Yeah, no, I got you. So, but the, you know, the initial breakdown here had the request at 1.46 million. Obviously, this will be 1 million, which is about 460 less.
Right.
And I'm just checking to make sure that the vaccine promotion and education part won't be the part that, that gets reduced or eliminated.
Gotcha, gotcha. I see where you're going now. Yes, sir.
So, that, that will make the cut.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big part of it, because it's going to determine where the effort goes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, sure.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. No questions, but once again, I want to thank you for all that you do. And now that we've got my email correct, I really enjoy getting all my emails from you. So, seeing you. So I'm seeing up, being up to date with everything. So thank you.
Thank you.
And as you pointed out, I did, I was there for your remarks at the chamber meeting. And, uh, what certainly, uh, it has occurred to me in the past and continues to occur to me is that while all the recipients are doing great work and they are all deserving of our support, uh, your mission is somewhat unique in that you are, you're defined as the county and there's a, a, a little different quality to what your task is. And it certainly strikes me that, uh, one of the things that I, I thought was very good about your remarks was you were acknowledging all the partners, including the ones here in this room and that, um, I, I appreciate that level of leadership. And it is, it is what, you know, what we hope to see, uh, and we do always see from the county health, uh, centers. And that is that kind of, uh, of taking all parties into account and making sure that the leadership that is required to come from a government entity is in fact exhibited. So thank you very much for that.
Well, I appreciate that, but I'll just be honest with you. I wasn't doing anything special. I was just speaking the truth. Um, you know, Operation Safe was, uh, a tremendous collaborative effort and Liberty Hospital, North Kansas City Hospital, Excelsior Springs, the city of, I mean, practically everybody. It was great. And this, even prior to this, we have good collaborative working relationships with all the hospitals, uh, in, in Clay County and the school districts and, and everyone else. And so I appreciate that, but that's just the way we roll, honestly.
Thank you again. We look forward to, uh, to seeing how we progress and, and hopefully finally, uh, leave this behind us. That's going to take some time and there is no crystal ball out there to tell us.
No, unfortunately not. But I, I believe Commissioner Carpenter is, was prophetic in his words earlier. Unfortunately, we're probably going to see it again.
I, I, I would, I would guess you're right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, that brings us to 2022-129, which is the request from Life Unlimited.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Mark Bertram with Life Unlimited. I'm the Chief External Relation Officer. And just wanted to thank you all today for looking at our project. Um, it's a opportunity for us to partner with you as well as the Department of Mental Health, um, as many in the room, you know, as well. We're in a staffing crisis right now. Um, we currently have over 60 openings, um, in our homes. And so, um, this will allow us to make our individuals more independent and not have to rely so heavily on staff, um, 24/7. Um, so we're excited about this and, um, just wanted to thank you guys for helping make it possible. I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the commissioner comments?
I have no questions, but I'm really glad that we were able to give you guys some, some assistance and this and see you guys help get through a little bit of this. So, um, this is a little near and dear to my heart as I've, I've worked with some of the individuals from your guys' programs in the past. Um, I used, I used to volunteer down at the, at the Maynard Thrift Store.
Oh, great.
So when I had a little free time. And so this is, I think this is wonderful. And anything we can help to do with you guys, please give us, give us a shout. We'd love to partner with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Uh, yeah, I just want to say, you know, thank, thanks to you for all the work you do. I know how hard you work. Um, and, uh, you serve so many, uh, residents here in Clay County, folks with physical and intellectual, uh, disabilities. And I, and, you know, you're doing amazing work and I'm so glad that the county can, can help chip in. And I know it's been a, uh, a struggle to, on the staffing side, uh, that the reimbursements from the state are often not nearly enough to, to pay competitive wages. I hope, I know the state is doing their budget right now. I hope, I hope they're tackling the issue. Is it, is it looking promising?
It's looking promising. Yes. Yeah.
Okay, good. Good. Cause I know, I know that's ultimately where the biggest bulk of, of, of funds, um, can be increased if, if they so choose. And, you know, I know our couple hundred thousand can, can help and I, and I hope that it does. And hopefully it can all come together and, and you all can keep providing amazing services to, uh, individuals and families who, who need it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sir. All right. Thank you very much for what you do. We appreciate it certainly. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this group of items before we dispose of them? Seeing none, are there, um, I, I'd just like to say that, you know, as a group, uh, it's a very, it's a great group of people. Certainly we would, uh, we would be in, in much worse shape without the individuals who came forward and the people that they represent behind the scenes to, uh, work hard to make sure that we, um, that the pandemic was not any more severe. It was certainly severe enough. It was certainly, uh, traumatic enough, but without the hard work of the individuals here, uh, it would not have, uh, it would have been so much worse. Uh, I'd also like to point out that going through all of this, that our, our staff, uh, led by our administrators, certainly Auditor Hurlbert, he's, there he is, he's still here, and, and the rest of our elected officials and staff. This is, uh, this has been a process that I think has, uh, uh, I think has been a good showcase for how well government can work when we are willing to, to keep our eyes on the goal and we're willing to work together. So I certainly appreciate, uh, the, uh, the effort and the work by all concerned. It's, um, that's hopefully something that we will be, uh, making a, a regular practice. And, uh, it wouldn't, wouldn't be commented on just because it is the natural way we all work together. But thank you very much for everything that you've done and, uh, which you are continuing to do. Commissioner Carpenter?
Um, yeah, no, I, I support these items wholeheartedly. Um, I think these are some of the wisest investments we can make with the, uh, available federal funds. Um, and, um, I too am grateful to everybody involved, uh, at the county level, but a, as well as the folks out there utilizing these dollars to, to make Clay County a, a better and healthier place. And, um, it's a great honor to, to, to help, uh, be a part of funding those efforts. So thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Um, I'm running out of ways to say thank you and for all your partnerships here for Clay County and keeping everybody safe and healthy and moving us all forward. So once again, just thank you. And if you need anything else, just come see us. And I wish we had more money for you. So, but who knows what the future holds, but hopefully no more pandemics. So let's, let's just hope for that. But thank you.
Um, just for procedure, I think the, the folks, uh, who are the recipients are familiar with the process, but just to review so that there's no mistaking, these are going to be, these are considered as one group. We broke them out a little bit here today. Uh, these will go on to regular, these will undoubtedly go, and we will discuss that in a moment, but it will likely go on to our regular agenda, which means we will be hearing them again next week. And they will be voted on as a group unless a commissioner would like to isolate one from the others. Uh, so, uh, certainly you're always welcome to attend, but I, I think we've, uh, I think, I sense that there's a consensus that we are all very supportive of these issues. Uh, but as I say, you're always welcome to, to attend. Whether you have business before us or not, you're always welcome. Uh, with that, um, I think, uh, this is pretty easily, uh, regular agenda group of items. Very well. Then items 2022-122, 125, 126, 127, 128, and 129 will appear on next week's regular agenda and they will continue to be, uh, bundled together as related items. That brings us to 2022-124. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-124 is consideration of an annual subscription with airport monitoring systems. This provides us additional data and information regarding the utilization of our airport. And Cheryl Walters, our interim manager is here and happy to explain, uh, the system and answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Uh, Cheryl Walters, Midwest National Air Center. And what we have today is a annual subscription, uh, for the airport monitoring system. With this system, we will be able to collect data for, um, a better option for grants. Uh, it will tell us what is using our aeronautical box at all times. So it'll let us know if it is a home-based airplane or if it's going to be one, a transient. Um, it allows us to, uh, to collect data and, uh, show our economic, um, impact in Clay County. And I believe that Lisa Summitt uses this. They've had it for a year and they said that the data that they can use on this for their, uh, weather also is a big thing for all of their pilots. So I think with this that it might, um, might allow us to show a better front for the airport.
Very good. Are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
The only question I have is, is this, is this going to be new? Have we utilized this in the past?
We have not.
We have not? Okay. Cause I saw, I saw that it was an annual
Yeah.
data subscription. But I'm like, I don't see where we've done this before. So that's exciting.
It's brand new and it's just something that, uh, I said, it'll show the use of the airport.
Wonderful. You said Excelsior uses it out there?
Yes.
They like it. Awesome. Wonderful. That's all I got.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone else who would care to comment on this? Seeing none, uh, this would be, uh, 2024-124 on next week's regular agenda?
Agreed.
Very well.
Thank you.
One, uh, twenty, thank you very much. 2022-124 will be on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2022-120. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-120 is considera, consideration and review of our P card program, which is our purchasing card program, cardholder policy. Um, we have had a policy, um, on the books for a long time. Um, and you know, it's always good to desktop a policy and, um, update it and incorporate best practices, um, also ensure that it is tied to what our operations are. Um, and so we've taken the opportunity to go through the policy, make some, um, changes to it. So in your packet, you have a red line version, which shows you what's been added or deleted. And then certainly a clean copy, which is easier to read. Um, and so we believe this policy does follow best practices in the utilization of purchasing card program. We also want to share that, you know, the purchasing card system was also something that was noted in the state auditor's report. And so we also believe that this ties to those recommendations by the state auditor. And our, um, procurement purchasing manager is here and happy to walk you through what some of the changes are and answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leslie DeGroot, Purchasing Agent for Clay County. I have no more words. That was an awesome summary. So, um, yeah, if, um, I guess if you have any questions about anything in your, um, on the red line or in the policy itself, the only thing I guess I do want to mention is that we are in the process of revising our P card reconciler manuals in addition to our administrator, our P card administrator policy as well. And those will be forthcoming. So you'll have lots of light reading to keep you occupied.
Now this, uh, this is something that, um, was, was certainly an issue of concern. Uh, and as the administrator pointed out, was covered, uh, to a fair degree in the, uh, report by the state auditor. Certainly something that, that is, certainly needs to be addressed. And I appreciate the fact that we are, uh, uh, looking at that kind of reform. Uh, so often, uh, when a report is given, although a state audit is a little bit different quality, but, uh, often when a government is given, uh, some, uh, review of its performance and there are recommendations for improving that performance, sometimes, uh, they manage to collect dust more than anything else. I am glad, uh, that, um, that the staff and, and the auditor, excuse me, assess, administrator, too many As, that the administrator are really going through the recommendations put forth by the, uh, state auditor and they are being implemented. Um, certainly I, I, I for one, uh, don't need to have pointed out to me by the auditor that, that we needed some, uh, revisiting of this subject, although I do appreciate the fact that, that she, uh, was able to underscore that. So we would go forward with it. It's certainly something I think that there is broad consensus that we needed to, to deal with both inside the building and, and outside with the public. So, um, is, is there anything here that kind of stands out as a particular, uh, reform that, that you think is a, is a standout or something that you'd like to draw our attention to?
Yes, sir. Actually, um, on, uh, the prohibited use of P cards, we have specifically listed legal, legal expenses.
Could you tell me what page you're on?
Yes, sir. I'm on page three.
Thank you.
Um, there is a, there's, there'll be two sections bolded on page three. One is allowable use of P cards and then, um, a little bit halfway down the page is prohibited use of P cards. So we've, um, added legal expenses to that, to that listing as specifically stated in the, in the state audit. Um, any cash advances or cash refunds of any type, those are, those have also been added. Um, purchases that don't require or don't have expenditure or level of expenditure approval, yet, those are also not, uh, authorized as well. Um, if you flip to page four, um, there was some language that we added regarding the, um, who is authorized to utilize the P card. And originally it was only the P card holder was authorized to use that card. However, after talking with a bunch of different departments and then discussing things with the leadership team, we know that that's not always, um, the case. So we've updated our policy to allow for authorized delegation from the P card holder to, to, uh, you know, one other staff. The P card holder is still ultimately responsible for the charges that are made on that card. So, um, the P card holder is made aware of that during training. So if they delegate that responsibility to someone else, it's still their ultimate responsibility. Those are really the main big changes, other than just adding more detail, listing more resources, explaining the process a little bit in more detail.
Well, certainly one of the issues that came up, uh, not too many years ago was the idea that the P cards were used to pay rather substantial legal expenses. So I think this reform is one that, um, that it has a lot of support for that to be, uh, put into place. So thank you very much for the, the work that you've been doing. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes. No, uh, I think this is some much needed, uh, review that needed to be, needed to happen with our P card policy. And I'm really glad to see it and I'm, will definitely support it. Awesome.
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, for, for doing this work and everybody involved. Uh, you know, I, one of the questions that got asked of me a million times during the mini year-long audit process was, you know, about accountability and what kind of malfeasance would, would be found. And, and my response was always that, you know, we'll have to wait to see the report. But ultimately the most important thing would be, uh, identifying where the county is not doing its best and, and they're going to recommend best practices, uh, and that we ought to, uh, study and then implement those. And, and so I think that's really the most important result that, that will come from the audit. Um, and in your view, these changes will, uh, uh, put us into accordance with their recommendations?
100%.
That, that's wonderful. And some of it's just common sense, right? We shouldn't be paying legal bills with the P card, right? You know, I'm not sure that people in the past felt that that was even necessary to, to write explicitly into the policy. I think it was just assumed. But, um, you know, uh, what we learned is that sometimes you've got to be pretty explicit with, with these kinds of things. Um, and I'm, I, I think this is a good step forward. And so thank you for, you know, your contributions to this. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Is anyone else would care to speak on this issue? Seeing none, uh, would the commission like to see this on, uh, consent or regular agenda for next week?
I, personally, I'm comfortable with consent unless there is some concern that, that maybe this would need to be amended. That would be the only, uh, 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 situation in which I would think regularly would make more sense. But, um, if we're confident that it does not need to be amended and is good to go as is, I'm good with consent personally.
I, I, I tend to agree. Plus the idea that once it's on the consent, you know, if, if something does change situationally, then we can certainly put it on regular if, if warrants more discussion. Commissioner Thompson, what are your thoughts?
I am very comfortable with consent.
Very good. Uh, in that case, 2022-120 will appear on the consent agenda for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to, uh, 2022-114. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-114 is consideration of a term and supply contract with Minnesota Bait and Fly Company. Uh, this is in support of our, um, patrons at Smithville Lake and providing them an opportunity to engage in activities at the lake. And Parks Director Mike Driscoll is here to answer any questions.
Good afternoon. Mike Driscoll, Parks Department. We, we would ask with the 2022-114 to approve and award the bid for bait term and supply to Minnesota Bait and Fly Company. Uh, they were the best and only responder to our specifications for the bid. Uh, they are a pass supplier. Basically they are the main regional supplier of bait that we use at our bait houses, sell at the lake. And the action we would like to have is to award the bid to Minnesota Bait and Supply for resale at our bait houses.
Thank you. Certainly the, uh, the market for night crawlers and crickets can be somewhat volatile. I'm sorry, just kidding a little bit, but, uh, no, I, I, I think it's, uh, you know, obviously it's something that, uh, is required for folks who are fishing. As a service, certainly want to make sure that they have the ability to, to be able to access those items. And, you know, we make a, we make a little bit on it, I'm sure.
Yes, a little bit. We have, uh, we buy incidental items also other than just, um, Yes, a little bit. We have, we buy incidental items also, other than just minnows and worms and stuff from them, but basically we spend about $12,000 a year, I think, and it is a budgeted amount, that merchandise for resale.
How, how long have we been using them as a vendor?
Pardon me?
How long have we been using them as a vendor?
I don't know that answer, sir.
A while, it sounds.
Yes, it's been, yes, a long time.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just want to make sure that it was known that this was a long-term vendor.
Yes.
Very well. Commissioner Thompson?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. Anyone else wishing to speak, seeing none? This is a contract. We want that on regular next time? I don't know that it's necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with consent, but up to y'all.
I'm comfortable with consent.
All right. We will go with consent for 2022-114. Thank you. That brings us to 2022-115. Administrator?
Yes, Commissioners, the next four are very similar resolutions and in consideration. So spring is upon us, and so is lots of great activities that are being planned across the county. And so what you have before you in the next four resolutions are consideration of special event permits. And so 2022-115 is a request by the Northwest Missouri State Fishing Club for their Spring Bear Cat Classic. It's to be held April 16th at Cap Branch Marina, and Director Driscoll is here to answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Yes, this, this request is just a fundraiser. This is a new event, special event for us by the Northwest Fishing Club, and it is a benefit, a fundraiser for a person of need there with that group. And basically, they are just asking for entrance of volunteers and contestants and the use of our Cap Branch Boat Ramp and area for setup and to hold this benefit bass fishing tournament. And at this time of the year, it poses no main congestion or any issues, you know, in excluding any of the other general public. We are happy generally to oblige best as we can for any of these type of events. I anticipate about 60, 50 or 60 boats, I think they said. It's no, no issue as far as, you know, the area handling that extra traffic at this time of year. And basically, the action needed would just be to sign the revocable license for this event and allow them to have their fundraising basket.
Very good. Are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thanks.
Consent agenda?
Okay.
Very well. 2022-115 will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2022-117. Administrator?
Yes, 2022-117 is also a request for an event license from Keystone Courage 22 MLS Owners Group for an annual family reunion to take place August 5th through the 8th at Crows Creek Campground, and Director Driscoll's here to provide some information.
Please proceed.
This is a new event request for us also. This is a, basically an RV group owner club of such that wants to have a get-together, a call of the reunion. This is for August 5th through 8th at Crows Creek, and we will hold sites for them, and basically they will be confined to E and F Loops in Crows Creek, and, and basically any unassigned sites will be let loose to the general public at a certain date there if they, you know, if they don't fill them all up. But this is a group that just has a, I don't, it's going to bring in a lot of different owners, RVO owners, to our campground that we probably wouldn't see otherwise. I know some are local, but there's a pretty good bunch that are going to be, you know, from out of the area. And basically, the rest of the fees and, and stuff will be as normal for the campground. They're just having a couple of little events there within the group, nothing out of the normal for a campground. And basically, the action needed for this would be to approve the revocable license for this special event.
Any questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Very well. Once again, this sounds like a consent agenda item.
Agreed.
So 2022-117 will appear on consent agenda in our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-118. Administrator?
Yes, 2022-118 is a request by Smithville High School Cross Country Booster Club for an event license for their 5K run on August 20th. They'll be utilizing, I believe, Smokey and Davy Trailhead along with Sailboat Cove, and Director Driscoll's here to share some information.
Please proceed.
This event request is for a, like, sixth annual event. I think that they've held this run out of Sailboat Cove. They transport their participants up to Smokey and Davy, and then run the trail back to Sailboat. This is to benefit the cross-country team there at Smithville High School. They don't ask for anything other than just the ability to come in and set up and have their volunteers possibly use one or two ATVs to help run water or equipment out onto the trail for the runners. Otherwise, other than being at night, it's not an unusual deal, and we have, like I say, for six years, I think this is sixth year, and we have not had any issues from this. And the action needed would be to sign the revocable license for this event.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments?
No questions. Thanks.
No questions.
Very good. Once again, this appears to be a consent item. Is that too good?
I agree.
Very well. 2022-118 will appear on the consent agenda. That brings us to 2022-119. Administrator?
Yes, 2022-119 is a request by the North American Trail Ride Conference for an event on August 26th through August 28th, and Director Driscoll's here to provide some information.
Please proceed.
This event is held out of Crows Creek Campground as well, A-Loop. This is the fifth annual request for this event. They have a competitive ride from that area, and basically they expect 60 or so riders. And I don't know the exact number of campsites they will occupy, but A-Loop is available for any of them that come in to sign up. They basically don't ask for anything except for the ability to have their administrators of the ride and stuff come in and set up and use their spots to prepare for this, this event. Otherwise, normal park procedures and fees, I think, are in place for the rest of the groups, and all, basically all other conditions and sound, you know, making sure the horses are proper and inspected and all that is taken care of by them at this, at this event. So the action needed for this would just be to approve the revocable license for this event.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No questions, other than just thanking Mr. Driscoll for handling all these requests and making all these events go smoothly. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you also because these events do, I think, are able to drive a little bit more attendance. As I think you had mentioned, that some of these will be attended by persons who would not normally be here, so hopefully this expands the number of those who will visit our parks in the future. 2022-119, consent agenda?
I agree. Yep.
Very well. That brings us to 2022-112. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-112 is consideration of an interlocal agreement between Clay County, really the state of Missouri, the city of Kansas City, Missouri, and Jackson County. The state has authorized $300,000 for a feasibility study on what to do with the existing Buck O'Neil Bridge. There is some discussion about creating a linear park, so they are recommending to do a feasibility study, and the state is prepared to fund that, provided that all the agencies, the city of Kansas City, Jackson County, and Clay County are all supportive of that project. There is no financial obligation of Clay County to participate in this feasibility study, nor does it obligate the county in any future costs, whatever the outcome of this feasibility study is. The only obligation for the county in this agreement is that we agree to volunteer assign a county staff member to be part of the process, to look at the RFPs for the Design Professional Services, and be part of that rating of those proposals, in essence, to help select the firm that will be doing the feasibility study. So in the proposal to you this evening, in the resolution identifies Kip Jones, our planning and zoning manager, to be our designee to review those proposals. There's a time commitment that says we will turn around those reviews and provide that information within 10 days of receiving it, but that's really the only obligation of the county to enter into this interlocal agreement. And I believe Commissioner Nolte has been part of those discussions and could probably share more information than I have, so.
Yeah, this is somewhat unusual in that a lot of times when, when these funds are forward to a, a project like this, they are given directly to the entity, in this case, Kansas City, who would be working on it. In this particular instance, it requires the, the signature of both Jackson and Clay Counties, which I, I'd rather like it. I like the idea that we are participating. I think it, it helps to promote the idea that we are a larger community, and that certainly on projects like this, it requires some buy-in from the counties as well as just the municipality. So one of, there were a number of reasons that it should come before the commission. The obvious one is that this is an agreement, but secondarily, I, I wanted to make sure that we were able to air that and air the issue, and I also want to make sure that we had a chance for legal counsel to, to be able to look it over and make sure that there was no obligation incumbent on the county apart from what the administrator had just outlined. I've seen some of the studies, and I would look forward to seeing more information on it. My, I think my mission when I'm in these meetings, and I try to fulfill that mission, is to ask the, the question, what, how does this benefit Clay County and Clay County citizens? So that is something that I have been asking and that I will continue to be asking. It seems largely the access will be from the southern side of the river, but I think this gives us an opportunity to assert the fact that, that Clay County has interests in, in these issues, and that those interests need to be taken into account when we are talking with the larger group, and that is certainly, I think, a very useful exercise in and of itself. With that, are there any questions or comments that we'd like to engage in?
No questions, I don't think. I think this is a fantastic idea. Been, like you had a number of conversations with folks at the city and stayed in terms of pursuing this. I think it makes sense to do the study and, and see what results we get in terms of things like cost, obviously, are going to be a big, a big factor. You know, I love the concept in theory, and it's just going to be a matter of putting some hard dollar amounts and plans to the community and seeing if people support it.
I think you're right. One of the things that when the discussion of putting up the Buck O'Neil Bridge replacement before was that there was some concern that if the, the existing one were to remain, the proximity of the piers might impinge on navigation. So I think we're going to get a little bit more information on that because obviously the river is used for transport of, of goods with the barge system. So I'd be very interested in, in hearing what's going on with that. And the studies, I believe, will give us more information to make a more informed decision on where we go.
Agreed.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I have no questions. I think this is going to be a very exciting, like you said, kind of a interesting balancing of finances opportunity, but I think Mr. Jones would serve well on this committee, so.
I think you're right. One of the comments I made during some of the discussion was there was discussion of the artwork that might potentially be put in. I made the comment that I, I thought that in some, to some degree, the artwork and some of the other amenities that would be put in, especially on the northern side, should be reflective of Clay County, that we should, that we have, in fact, a rather distinct identity. We are part of the city, but we are also, we are a community that has a, our, our own particular identity. So my hope is that it reflects what Clay County is, especially in this bicentennial year. I think, I think it goes beyond just civic pride in our county, but also to make sure that we communicate that we are, that we are our own entity, and that we do, while working with the city, we do have our own particular heritage that we take a great deal of pride in. With that, I don't mind it going, I mean, consent sounds like it would work. If, if we would like to discuss it further, I don't mind that, but I'm, it does not involve the expenditure of county funds, and it also is not particularly controversial, so I'm, I'm happy with whatever the commission wants to do.
I feel pretty comfortable with consent.
I agree.
Very good. 2022-112 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2022-113. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-113 is approval of the Cooperative Agreement with Mid-America Regional Council. This is the regional planning organization in which the county has been a member for a number of years. We actually have two seats on the MARK board, along with numerous staff are part of subcommittees with MARK. It deals with transportation. A lot of the federal-state funding go through MARK to make eligible for transportation funding, also air quality, and many other projects that they do. The annual fee is $57,487. So that's a slight increase over last year. It's about $4,000 over last year's dues. MARK's membership is based on population, and they recalibrate that every 10 years after the census. So now that the 2020 census is out there, with the growth of Clay County, we saw a slight increase in our membership dues. Happy to answer any questions. I'm sure commissioners are very familiar with MARK, but we would recommend approval.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have no questions.
No questions.
This, if there's no objection, then 2022-113 would be on next week's regular agenda?
I agree.
Very good. That brings us to our final item this afternoon. That's 2022-121. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-121 is approval and consideration of a contract for professional services with Northland Healthcare Access. This is, again, similar to many of the resolutions that were presented to the commission at the last meeting. This is part of the budget and has been authorized during the budget process for this not-for-profit organization in the amount of $30,000 to assist with healthcare coverage for those who do not have insurance in the county. I don't think Karen is here.
I don't see, no, I don't believe she is.
She, I think she had a conflict and couldn't attend today.
Are there any questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. If there's no other discussion, 2022-121, a regular agenda for next week?
I agree.
Very good. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda for this afternoon. If someone would like to make a motion related to the disposal of those items for next week's meeting?
Commissioner, I move that we put the following items on next Wednesday, 6:00 PM's consent agenda. 2022-120, 114, 115, 117, 118, 119, and 112, with each of the remaining items from today's agenda to be put on the regular agenda for next week.
Motion's been made for the distribution of regular agenda items on today's agenda to be placed on consent and regular agenda for next week, as noted. Any discussion? Seeing none? You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Yes?
That brings us to comment on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who'd care to comment on any items not on this afternoon's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any office holders or agencies wishing to comment on any items not on today's agenda? Seeing none. That brings us to Administrator comments. Administrator, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Just briefly, you know, it, it takes a group to do many activities that we do, and a lot of those individuals are behind the scenes. And so today I would like to recognize sort of the man behind the curtain. And so today, I would like to recognize sort of the man behind the curtain that has helped with transparency the last year of putting meetings on the website, making them live, and also archiving them so individuals could see them after, at their leisure, and to watch their county government at work. It takes a lot of work to do that, and we want to recognize Carter, who is behind the curtain, so to speak, and working. This is his last commission meeting that he is operating. He is leaving the county to pursue other career opportunities, and we will miss him, but we certainly appreciate all his hard work and what he has done to move the county forward in our efforts of transparency and making our meetings public access through social media and the website. So, want to thank Carter for all his hard work.
Thank you very much. By the way, Carter, if you're listening, which I trust you are, if you'd like to come out and take a quick bow?
I feel like we need to come in here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a premiere. I know you see us.
Contrary to popular myth, he is not chained to his desk where he has our...
He can come out from behind the curtain.
He can occasionally. I share your admiration for the job that Carter has done. We have made tremendous strides in recent times, going from where we were to where we are now, and certainly, Carter has contributed mightily to that, and we wish him all the luck in his future career opportunities and hope he will not be a stranger. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I have nothing else to say, but I hope, Carter, you have a great time in your endeavors that are not here without Suckley County, but like, Commissioner Nolte, sorry. My allergies are running amok today, which is fogging my brain, but you are always welcome back to spend time with us. Let's have coffee.
Well, I would say thanks to Carter, too. He made a brief appearance. You know, since my very first day here, Carter has been a great asset and worked hard and very grateful for all the work he's done.
Thank you. I appreciate that you, but, sorry, just had a mess with him a little bit there. Sorry, Carter, he's probably back there going crazy, going, oh, my God, what's going on? Thank you very much. And Administrator, thank you for pointing that out. Certainly, we want to make sure that the people who work here get the due credit, and to have that opportunity is certainly welcome. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Are there any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Thompson?
I don't know how I follow that up, so, except for spring has sprung, and that is out, so has everybody's claritin, so I'll just put it there. That's it.
There you go. I like your plans. Commissioner Carpenter?
No comments. Thank you.
And I have no comments at this time. That brings us to approval of minutes of previous sessions. We have two sets of minutes for approval listed on our agenda today. Would anyone like to make a motion related to one or both of these items?
I make a motion to approve our Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, 3:00 PM meeting, and our Wednesday, February 9th, 2022, 6:00 PM meeting.
Motion's been, I'm sorry?
As printed.
As printed. Motion's been made for the approval of the minutes of previous sessions, those being Thursday, February 3, 2022, 3:00 PM, and Wednesday, February 9, 2022, 6:00 PM, as printed or published or whatever the word is.
I like printed, but you can say...
Printed is good.
Not picky.
With that, is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes?
And Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to written reports. Are there any written reports to be submitted to the commission at this time?
Yes, we had two. I emailed you earlier in the week, the monthly report from the auditor for the month of March, and then Stacy is handing out the month of March for, from the clerk's office, monthly revenue and fees, and that's it.
And have the commissioners gotten the email copies referred to? Very good. There are no executive sessions listed for today's meeting. That brings us to recess and adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.